He's working on it right now.
It's the matrix.
Can you take notes on your web browser though? Like you can on the backside?
Uh, like typing notes?
Or you just take on?
I just, it's like for mine. For mine at least, like I can do a, and annotate it. So I don't know if that has the same action.
Cause I'm just on the web browser, so. Okay. Okay, it is one o'clock, time for our regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday, October 1st. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, it is now time for Commissioner Cessna to do the flag and invocation.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head. Please, let's take a minute of silence for, to reflect on those who have lost their lives and for all the damage on the southeast part of the United States. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. Please guide us with wisdom to help move our community forward in a positive direction. And please be with our first responders as they're out in our community protecting us and keeping the peace. In this we pray, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, next item, we have approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting. If, uh, or no cor- corrections, we'll stand as approved.
I just had a minor correction that I told our city clerk about.
Okay. Okay, uh, next item would be the public comment, which, uh, we ask that you come up if you are here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. Uh, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, 6A.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Arlene Clark with Peddler's Market to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to have signs placed on Kansas Avenue from Campus Drive to Belmont Place from October 21st through 28th, 2024 for Peddler's Market event. See Lynn?
Madam Commissioners, um, I have, Arlene Clark is here also with Peddler's Market. She just came before you. She has come twice before, if you remember, August 6th, I believe, and September 2nd?
3rd.
3rd, and, uh, she coming, she's coming before you to request signs to be placed on Kansas Avenue between campus and Belmont. Um, and that was a request that was previously, um, requested on her first one on August 6th. Ms. Clark is here, if you would like to ask her any questions. But the Peddler's Market, I believe, is October 26th and 27th at Exhibition Building.
It is amazing.
Any questions?
So, so talk a little bit about, I mean, I know that these, these signs, I mean, obviously you come in again and these signs really make a difference as far as for attendance and also the advertising. Can you talk about? I mean, I know we've done this in years past and so.
This is the 11th year. When I purchased this event, it was 45 years that it'd been happening in Garden City. It was a dying event. I built it back up. I'm one person. The vendors pay their fee. That takes care of the building, the advertising, the making of the signs. Advertising is very expensive, all of you know. Many people drive up and down. It's a very cost-effective in the past for advertising. People see it. I space them out. They may not read it the first time, but they're going to see another one down a little further at a stoplight or something like this. People coming in from all over, see these signs plus the ones you've already approved. We watch, I mean, I don't know, the construction's over on that section, so that's why I'm back to see if I can get them from that, from Belmont on. Because I'm not sure that maybe grass may have been planted, seeded, so I want to stay away from that area. So, any other questions? It's, advertising is the largest part of this well, right now, until the county ups the fee for the building. But other than that, it's the largest portion of my expense is the advertising.
Do you have average attendance at the event? I know.
Last year there was five to 6,000 people attended.
Wow, okay.
And I have vendors from eastern Kansas, Kansas City area, Nebraska, Colorado, Texas, Oklahoma. So, it's bringing in small businesses per se. These people make, hand-make a lot of the stuff. Very limited direct sales type items are allowed in here. So, you're bringing people, you know Garden City's the hub for shopping. They're going to eat here, they're going to shop here once they come here to attend Peddler's Market.
I think for our sake and just sort of an update so that you are aware of the codes being updated for this coming year, um, and that's gone into effect earlier this year. But I think our, I don't think that we have an issue with your signs being up this year, but I think for the next year, we're going to have to put the, you know.
The halt?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, just so that everybody's aware that we did have our ordinances updated. Um, so the sake of the fact that we don't have obstructed signs in the way so that it, you know, interferes with traffic, but, um, I'll kind of ask the commissioners up here if they have any other questions for you. But aside from that, I think that's the issue moving forward. So with that change coming up.
So this could be the last year. Is there somewhere on there that I can get the ordinance for signs?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Sure, we can have those printed out and.
Okay.
You can take them with you or we can have them emailed to you.
Just email them.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay.
See Lynn has, I gave her an address.
No, but thank you for coming up and.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all the years that you've, this event.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this event's been, yeah.
Okay, I gave her some cards, so hopefully I see some of you down there.
All right.
Thank you.
So your alternatives are the governing body may approve the request to waive the sign ordinance or the governing body may deny the request.
Well, and the one thing I, I really appreciate that you're bringing up that the ordinance has changed this year and I, and I, I know that the signs were probably printed before the ordinance had changed. And so I think this is really that awareness and also understanding that these kind of things in the future are going to be guided by that sign ordinance. It's, I know that this is a, I really appreciate you speaking about the value of this event and then how many people it brings into Garden City that. I was, I'm shocked and that's really great to have that many people. Um, and considering, uh, those comments, I would go ahead and move that we approve the ordnance, the signs for this year.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 7, under City Manager's Report, uh, hinted at it in the comments at the last meeting, but, uh, that was pretty fresh off the, uh, fresh off the newsreel information. Congratulations to, uh, Rochelle Powell and her staff, um, for, uh, earning the FAA Medal of Excellence for their performance on their annual inspections. Rochelle's here.
She is.
We can clap for whether she's here or not.
There she is.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to say it's not just us, the airport staff, the fire department has a major portion of play with that, Crosby Aviation or FBO, and all of our tenants out at the airport helping to provide a safe environment for the public, uh, flying, getting back and forth through airport, commercial service, general aviation, everything above. So we're really proud that, um, our hard work was recognized by the FAA to provide a safe facility and be in compliance with the regulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
We'll do, I'll extend that, thank you.
Thank you.
And while you're here, just a quick question. You think, looking at the numbers for employment, do you think we'll hit 30,000 by the end of the year?
Oh, great question, yeah. Everybody flies for the holidays, they will. Um, yeah, we are on record for a record-breaking year again, so, um, hopefully we can beat that 30,000 employment record and, uh, or create a new record over 30,000, so, uh, fingers crossed.
Is there any, Rochelle, is there any, uh, bringing another carrier or another flight? I know that's still something that people want to go, you know, to Denver. Is that, is that, has there been any interest or has there been any to talk about that?
More than likely we wouldn't have, we wouldn't go to Denver just because our compete, we want to, uh, keep the airports in Kansas healthy, and so we don't want to provide the same service that Dodge City, Liberal, Hays and Salina provide to Denver. So, um, with the essential air service contracted, it's very complicated and you are restricted on what that additional air service looks like. Um, the problem is, um, we have been pursuing other options. Um, our location in the Midwest is kind of complicated, uh, for a lot of the smaller, uh, airlines that are doing less than daily service to a destination. Uh, the location we're at, kind of in the middle of the country, is very hard for them to bring a flight out with a crew and get back to their destination within the same amount of time. Um, their pilots and crew would, uh, timeout. Um, looking at the smaller airports, the infrastructure just hasn't really been brought into more than Midwest. So once that happens, we are more than likely, um, a little bit better positioned because of infrastructure, the operations for a smaller airline would be there. Um, but it would look like something less than daily to one of our top destinations. And we are currently working with our air service consultant to do, uh, leakage study, market update. And so hopefully we'll be bringing that to you later this year for a, um, pre-meeting just to, uh, give you some more information of kind of what the passenger trend for our 90-mile catchment area is doing.
Oh, thank you, that's great information.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
The other items under 7 are, uh, monthly reports. Do you have questions on any of those outside of the ones just asked of the airport? I guess there wasn't an airport one on this one, but. Any questions? Okay, um, you'll see the meetings of note. I do think we have also, um, a date set for the Southwest Kansas Coalition Meeting. Um, that's kind of latest news. Danielle, you remind them of that date or let them know of that date?
Yes, um, we are looking at having our annual SKC meeting on Wednesday, November 6th, and it is Garden City's turn to host, uh, so the drive won't be too terribly, terribly far for you, for you all. So get that on your calendars and please let, uh, myself know if you plan on attending that meeting. Um, likely we'll have, it'll be a public meeting because there'll be, uh, more than a three of you or three, uh, representatives from either Liberal or Dodge there as well, so.
We don't have the location nailed down just yet, so, uh, on the next meeting that will be, um, added to the meetings of note.
So on that meeting, I have a question. You know, I know that lots, and that other means we've been to, we've never had the chance to go and look at any of the things that are happening in the city, but with today's pre-meeting, would there be an opportunity that we could maybe kind of showcase some of the things that we in Garden City have been doing as an offering to the people coming in from outside the area?
Um, so we are still in the process of putting together exactly what that agenda looks like. Um, what we've typically done is gotten, uh, kind of a legislative update from, uh, Pettiger and Smith, uh, and they'll come out and kind of do that, and then we typically have a, a dinner after that where we can talk through that legislative policy item. I don't know that we've contemplated going on a tour, kind of following that, but it's something we can certainly, uh, discuss and see what the appetite is to do some of that.
There's just been so much.
Certainly we can talk about some of that.
Yeah, there's been so much happening.
If you don't get out there.
Yeah, and we need them to come here more often, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a good opportunity.
Maybe it looks more like a presentation versus going out and.
Yeah, exactly, more like a presentation.
Driving around.
Yep, yeah, I think we can certainly highlight some of those things. And, and it's a good kind of segue for some of the policy conversations that we'll be having with that group anyway, so we can kind of show off how some of these things are working and working really well here in town.
Nice.
Yep.
I think we're ready for item 9, which is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2572-2024A.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve appropriation ordinance 2572-2024A.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to, oh, we're gonna have, Commissioner Langrass is gonna step down for this one. Madam Commissioners, item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a reselect, uh, resolution declaring official intent to issue star bonds for Sports of the World Phase 2. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3130. Danielle?
All right, good afternoon, Madam Commissioners. Uh, the developer for Sports of the World project have expressed interest in expanding the Sales Tax and Revenue Bond, or Star Bond District to include a Phase 2. Uh, the proposed resolution outlines the city's intent to issue special obligation star bonds in an amount not to exceed $38,500,000 to finance a portion of the costs associated with Phase 2. The project is anticipated to have four softball fields and four baseball fields and include several areas for future development needs as well. The fields can be utilized for soccer or flag football as well, and you have, uh, kind of an alternative map in your packet that shows how those would be laid out. The issuance of star bonds and all necessary documents is subject to the developer obtaining any necessary approvals from the Kansas Department of Commerce and additional approvals, uh, by you all as well. Um, so this is kind of the first step of a multi-step process, uh, that would have to take place in order to, uh, get this project, uh, through all of the approval processes. Uh, the resolution has been drafted by the city's bond counsel, Mary Carson, and has been reviewed by the developer and their legal team. There are two alternatives before you this afternoon. One is to approve the resolution as presented. Uh, the other would be to not, uh, approve the resolution as presented and provide staff with alternative direction. Uh, staff recommends approval of the ordinance. Uh, there's no, uh, fiscal note tied with this, uh, specific action. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have folks from the development team here, um, if you want to ask them any questions about the project as well.
Looks like another great addition for our community, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, well, this is an amazing addition to Garden City for it to become a statement in Southwest Kansas. So appreciate the efforts, the investments, um, the team. You guys is, are well hard work put together for the vision of the future of Garden City and we appreciate that very, very much, so.
One thing, one thing we learned also like today, that the star bond is not, doesn't at all begin to cover the ultimate cost of everything. And so there's a lot of, a lot of the developer's skin in the game. I mean, they're really investing a lot just in the future of Garden City. And so I agree, I think this is a really neat opportunity.
Definitely will create us as the destination location for western Kansas and the region. On that note, Mayor, I make the motion to approve resolution 3130-2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass for one. Okay, thank you, Danielle.
Item 10B, the governing body is.
We'll wait for Commissioner Langrass, sorry.
There you go. Sorry, bro.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. And if approved, it would be resolution 3131-2024 and abate conditions at 210 Conkling Avenue. There's three more, uh, nuisance resolutions following that. I'll have Trent go through this one that, which explains the notice processes, um, in the, in items C, D and E. We'll simply, uh, read the resolution number and the address. And if there's anybody here that wants to speak on any of these items, uh, if they could make that known, after we introduce the item as quickly as possible, that would be good. Trent? Oh, Alicia?
Madam Commissioners, the governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on the property within the city of Garden City. It has been determined that the residence located at 210 Conkling Avenue has an environmental nuisance condition on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. There is one inoperable vehicle located on the property. Staff has visited the property on many occasions. The property owner and the residents have been notified by two order violations since August 21st, 2024 and a certified letter on September 6th, 2024. The property owner and the residents were unable to be reached and no contact was attempted by the property owners according to section 38-137 of the environmental code of ordinances. And neither have abated the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on this property. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the attached resolution or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends the governing body approve the attached resolution and the abatement costs incurred by the city will be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the motor vehicle nuisance is located.
Okay, any questions? I hear a motion.
Mayor, I make the motion, we approve resolution 3130-2024.
That was the previous resolution number, right? 2124, right?
It would be 3131-2024.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Sorry. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 3131-2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 3132-2024 and abate conditions at 1211 North 8th Street.
I move to approve resolution number 3232-2024.
3132, right?
Yeah. 3132.
I second.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3133-2024 and abate conditions at 210 Conkling.
I move to approve resolution number 3133-2024. I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution that if approved would be resolution 3134-2024 and abate conditions at 1611 11th Street.
I move to approve resolution number 3134-2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider the Garden City Electric Department to be the electric service provider for the property annexed, uh, annexed into the boundaries of the city of Garden City by ordinance number 2975-2024. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Back on February 6th, 2024, the governing body annexed real property into the city boundaries with ordinance number 2975-2024 as per the property owner's request. However, this ordinance was not published until August 15th, 2024. Now, this was an unusual situation because of the, the development agreement issue with that particular piece of property, which caused a delay in the publication of the annexation ordinance. Under the Retail Electric Service Act, we need to follow the proper steps beginning with the day that annexation was effective, which was August 15th, 2024, which is why I'm requesting the 11 factors to be considered again by the governing body. Uh, this property was annexed into the city, was within their certified territory of a retail electric supplier, specifically Wheaton Electric Cooperative pursuant to KSA 66-1, comma, 176. The city has an obligation to negotiate with the issuance of a franchise agreement pursuant to KSA 12-2001 with Wheaton Electric, since Wheaton Electric is the retail electric supplier, holding a certificate within that annexed area. On February 15th, 2024, Mr. Jim McVeigh, Assistant General Manager and General Counsel to Wheaton Electric, notified the city via email to myself, Mike Muirhead, Director of Public Works and Utilities, that Wheaton would not be requesting a franchise agreement to serve this property annexed into the city by ordinance number 2975-2024. Also pursuant to KSA 66-1, comma, 176, the city is obligated to pay Wheaton Electric for the expense of the retirement of Wheaton facilities on the property and two times the previous 12 months annual revenue. There are currently three streetlights as part of a network of other streetlights that are being, that were being served by Wheaton Electric. These streetlights provide lighting for portions of Mary Street that was part of that annexation. The city has already compensated Wheaton Electric $596.58 as invoiced for two years of lost revenue, and the three streetlights in question have already been connected to the city's electrical system after receiving permission and approval from Wheaton Electric Corporation. So, uh, KSA 66-1, comma, 176 requires the governing body to consider a minimum of 11 factors when making a selection of the electric retail provider. These factors are but not limited to the following, and, uh, if it's okay with you, I'll, I'll skip over all of those. It's the same factors that you read, I read to you before, but I can if you want me to.
That's okay, we've looked at it, thank you.
So, uh, after you've considered those factors, the governing, the alternatives are that the governing body may request additional information to consider when selecting an electric service provider. Or other alternative is that the governing body may further discuss the 11 factors presented and consider the findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail supplier at a subsequent meeting. Uh, staff recommends alternative two, the governing body further discuss the 11 factors and considers findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail electric supplier at a subsequent meeting. And just as the fiscal note, if Garden City Electric Department or another, other provider is selected to serve that property pursuant to that same state statute, eight and a half percent of the gross electrical energy sales revenue obtained from the property will be paid to Wheaton Electric on an annual basis for a period of 10 years. After 10 years, the payment to Wheaton Electric will automatically stop. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Mayor, I make a motion that we further discuss the 11 factors presented and consider findings of fact and conclusions about selecting a retail electric supplier at a subsequent meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Item 12B is an executive session. We don't anticipate action being taken after that executive session. So if the commission would like to take up the consent agenda item and then the commission reports, we can conclude the broadcast of the meeting. Appears that's okay. So the consent agenda item, if you'd like to approve it as is and not pull any of those items to discuss separately, would be the approval of consent agenda item 13A and B.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items 13A and B.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Ready for commissioner reports? Okay, Commissioner Cessna.
Great pre-meeting this morning, um, at the, uh, Sports of the World now called The Refinery. Uh, it's a very large place and, uh, part of our star bond project. And I think it'll be a great facility, not only for Garden City, but for the region to come and participate in numerous activities. And then also approving, uh, phase, the kind of the start of Phase 2 today. It's just helping Garden City continue to grow and, um, be the destination location for, uh, western Kansas and like I said, the, the entire region, really. Uh, did a ribbon cutting this morning for the, uh, Finney County Library Story Walk. Uh, that's their grand opening of, uh, between Mayor, uh, Main Street and Fleming. Uh, there's different panels that you can read, uh, stories, um, and it's in 21 different languages for our entire community. for our entire community, and they'll switch that out each month, so it gives families and kids a great opportunity to not only exercise but get in a story. And then they said during the summertime, they'll switch it out every two weeks, so it'll be a little bit more fresh during the summertime because people are out and we're walking on the trail. So another great addition to our community, not only getting out and exercising, but now you can stimulate your mind as well. Finally, I just wanted to let everybody know fall cleanup is, has started in the community, so just look at the map and know when your date is to bring your items out. I know people have started bringing their items out to get picked up. Just keep them on the curb side. Don't put them in, in the gutter or in the street. We just ask that you keep them on the curb side to keep them out of the street and everything. But other than that, that just helps our community stay nice and welcoming, not only for our, our citizens here in the community, but as people come into our community, it's a great way to show off our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Landgraf.
So I was able, a couple of weeks back, to go to the Kansas Water Plan Strategic Implementation Planning Local Consult meeting in Dodge City. That's a mouthful to say, but it's really good being able to go there and being able to have our voice heard with regards to the state, is very well attended. I thought it was really very well attended by the city as well. And, you know, this is one of those issues where it feels like nobody really wants to talk about it or really bring it up, but now we're finally actually looking towards solving these issues, and these are very important issues, you know. Without water, we really don't have anything. We don't have a city, we don't have a community, we don't have any jobs, so it's really good being able to see the state finally taking steps towards helping resolve this very important issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Landgraf. Next, Commissioner Winn.
Yeah, I went to the same conference, and it was really surprising for me, for someone who lives in Southwest Kansas, you haven't really experienced that much water, but you recognize that, holy smokes, if we run out of water, my children are not going to have a community to even live in. So that was really eye-opening for me. And then last Wednesday, I went on a ride along with Brecken Ralston. Thankfully, a very quiet ride along, a couple of chases here and there, but it was really admirable to see one of my close friends live his, his profession out and starting up to be one of the most solid rookies I've ever seen. And then last week, I was able to host the second grade Alter Brown students here in the chambers for a presentation. It was, I hope that we can eventually get more young leaders into politics because it, just to see their joy and just to see them care more about local politics is very humbling. And also, I'd like to invite everyone to the Public Safety Open House on October 12th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Really great event to meet and also to see all of the amazing resources we have in Garden City. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Undero.
So that, yeah, it's good you can go a little bit long. Last time when I was first, I felt, wow. So I really enjoyed the pre-meeting. Steve O'Braith and RJ Swinder gave an incredible tour, and what a legacy of Cecil O'Braith, The Refinery, and the absolute size of this, of this building, this structure, this opportunity is really amazing, and so what an addition. I just want to say thank you. From when we first saw it, you saw the plans and nothing happened, and all of a sudden now, you know, soon in 2026, we're going to see some really neat things happening, hopefully before then. I am so glad that Kansas Avenue is completed, so I was avoiding that because it's really easy to get tickets there if you make the wrong turn or right turn, but I, one thing I wanted to say is it, they did an incredible job and it really opens up that whole area. So I do want to say thank you to the city and all of the, you know, extra attention that was happening during that time, but having these things completed in our city, these different projects really make a big difference. And so I just want to say thank you on that. I am also excited, as Commissioner Sesna said, about the next phase of STAR bond. It's, it's amazing how far in advance you have to plan just to make these things happen, but it really is going to be a really valuable opportunity. And yeah, the tally trail, that's really neat with the storyboards. Our trail system is one of our top, top activities in Garden City, and then with the fall, a lot more people are walking, so just be aware in the mornings when those lights are flashing, there's someone around, and so just make sure you slow down. Most, the easiest thing to do is to stop, but I'll tell you, the walkers have increased a lot in the mornings, so with that, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I won't repeat everything you guys had said today.
I think you ought to repeat the name of the conference.
Yeah. SWP, WKC, yeah. But no, I really appreciate all of the comments that were made up today, up here today. Yeah, without mentioning everything, the only other thing that I had on my list was about the Fall Fest and the multicultural week that I attended, and they were amazing events. We did have a storm blow in at the Fall Fest just at the end of that, but a lot of people attended. I'm curious to hear about the numbers once they get the place or AI information to us, but I think it was well attended, great food. I almost stopped at every vending person that was cooking food because it, just the smells were just so, so awesome. But yeah, that was a great, a great week to have here in Garden City, so yeah, I appreciate all of the investments, the growth in Garden City. We are looking ahead, planners with the city staff on electric, on water, with some new updates coming up, and so we are striving to make life better here in Garden City and keep it, keep it going for years to come, so please stay with us and we'll keep growing. So thank you for all the comments here today, Commissioners. And next, we'll go into executive session.
Who's included in this? Mr. Dumbermuth?
10 minutes, Mr. Dumbermuth.
Assistant City Manager.
You, that's it. Okay, and ACM Burke.
Okay. Mayor, we move into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-43.